Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Beistel. Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Let the record show that Mr. Miller and Mr. Benz are both out of town this evening.
Okay, we have several citizens comments. Just a reminder, we'd like you to limit them to about five minutes each, please. First, we have Alicia Charamonti.
Hi, I'm Alicia Charamonti. As I understand it, you're going to be voting on a tax hike, and I just wanted to let you know, no one can afford it. Everybody in their, in the community and their individual families, everyone's tightening their belts, and the school should also have to tighten its belts. If you have to get rid of some things, that's what you're going to have to do. No one in the community or in the school district wants a tax hike. No one can afford it. Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Grimm and it's budget taxes.
I kind of echo the ladies comments there, and also I've noticed as you drive around town and in the area, a lot of homes are vacant. We're losing a lot of people leaving our town. I know just in my area where I live, we've had two folks that have lost their home, that have went to the bank, and folks are struggling. I work at Brillhard Hardware, and when folks come in to make purchases, I notice now they're thinking a lot harder. Some folks come in and they're juggling four and five and six credit cards to try to pay for maybe a $50 item. And some folks come in and need something, and they just can't afford it. And they'll say, "I have to come back next week. I have to wait till payday. I'll be back next month." I mean, folks are really struggling, and I'd like you to reconsider, and I hope you choose not to raise our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fred Collins, football field.
Actually, I had more than one thing to talk about real quick. But the football field is the first. Talked to Marlon there. Do you know what the final bill was on the field?
I don't have that number with me, sir.
Is it done?
Yes, it is.
How long has it been done?
About a month.
There's been no comment on what it costs the taxpayers?
Well, that was discussed on a number of occasions at meetings, sir.
I must not have been here for that one. When can we know for sure?
We can provide that information.
If I call tomorrow down at the office, can I get that?
You can, Mr. Marnell? Yeah, call Mr. Marnell's office. He's our business manager, sir.
We're waiting for the final invoice from the prime contractor, Vasco, and the final invoice from the architect, but I know the total dollar amount, so...
Okay, good.
Just off the top of my head.
But I can call you tomorrow for that, or...
Yeah, call me, 'cause I'm on vacation tomorrow. You can call Mr. Marnell.
Okay. You see, so far these comments have been made about the taxes. It's every meeting that I've been to is about the taxes just about. I don't know when it's going to sink in. The second thing I want to talk to you is about the school board. You were elected to do a job. About these taxes, you heard, nobody can afford them. If you can't do your job you're elected for, step down. Let us get somebody in here that can help. And one last thing, remember, you are the boss here. You answer to the administrators. They don't, they have to answer to you. Remember that.
Thank you. Catherine Feig, budget.
For the past four years, I have decried the absence of public involvement in developing a budget for the Southmoreland School District. The relationship between elected officials and voters should be based on one factor: trust. The latest buzzword in today's government is transparency. Not to worry. With some exceptions, this school board will never be accused of being transparent. The preliminary $27 million budget was adopted on May 29, 2014. For clearly evident reasons, the regular public board meeting of June 5 was canceled, followed by the cancellation of the public board meeting of June 12. How convenient and timely. Finally, on June 19, seven whole days before the final budget is to be adopted, the public is given its only opportunity to address the board as a whole. In seven days, like it or not, this board will vote on a $27 million taxpayer-funded budget with the least possible public input. But you cry out, "The budget has been on display in the administration office for 30 days for the public to see." Well, let's see how that works. Let's assume that a member of the public did come into the budget, to see the budget, and had questions or comments. Exactly how many board members would be there at that time and place to respond to those concerns? But you cry out, "You can talk to the superintendent, or the business manager, or somebody else." The point of that? How many votes do the business manager, the superintendent, or anybody else have on the budget? Zero. That would be as effective as the infamous roundtable discussion hoax. Public input on the Southmoreland School District budget has been and continues to be a joke. The only thing that has escalated has been the underhanded and deceitful method of excluding the public from meaningful input on the budget. Please, prove me wrong. In the next seven days, eliminate all property tax increases, decrease the millage, and make our expenses correlate with a dramatic decrease in student enrollment. Or will puppets on the board disregard the taxpayers once again? Clearly, public opinion and taxpayer concerns mean nothing to you. This board should have met publicly twice a week for the entire month of June to discuss this important matter. To be honest with the public, all of you need to flat-out tell the truth that the more than $1 million in cost increases has nothing to do with our children's education. Not one dime, not one nickel, not one copper penny will go to buy so much as a pencil, a piece of paper, or a book. Don't tell people that their increased taxes are going for our children's education. Tell them the truth. These increases are strictly designated for higher salaries and benefits for the adult employees, not for our children. The public deserves to know what it is for which they are being forced to pay. We receive 65 cents of every dollar we spend at Southmoreland from the state, and this is because our population here is impoverished. And yet you continue to punish us with taxes which have no ability, no relationship to the ability for the people to pay them. I guess the golden rule does not apply to the citizens of the Southmoreland School District. The level to which this board and administration have sunk, to disregard public concerns about the budget and taxes, is a shameful disgrace.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Barclay, topic tax increase. Sharon, Sharon Barclay.
Hi, I'm back again. I was here when we were getting the teachers their raises. I called each and every one of you board members. "Mrs. Rhodes, I talked to you for 45 minutes or longer. You were fantastic. Yes, we're going to work this out." Nothing. You ended up giving them everything. "We can't afford it. When are you going to learn?" "We got new board members. We're hoping they step up and say enough is enough." "Please, our new board members, please step up. Bob, you're one. Step up and stop this." "This money, we don't have it. I don't know where you think we're going to get it." "Will you please reconsider giving this another tax raise?" Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Livinggood, budget taxes.
I didn't come here expecting to talk, so I'll keep it very brief. I'm just requesting that you please do not raise our taxes. We really can't afford it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, did you want to do something?
Entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules temporarily, to listen to the Westmoreland County Redevelopment Land Bank at this point since she is here, and then we can pick up with the rest of it. Move by Mrs. Love, second by Mr. Calero. All in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to introduce April Koppas, who's with us this evening, and I believe she's going to show you some things on the screen. You have all the information in your packet, but she's also going to put it on the screen so the public's able to view it. So I'd invite you down to the table where you can see the screen, please.
Yeah, I'm pretty clumsy. You don't want me tripping over these. Thank you. Thank you. Good thing you're here. Thanks for having me. Again, I'm April Koppas. Let me get out of your way so you can see it. The director of the county's redevelopment authority and the newly minted Westmoreland County Land Bank. So I'm here to talk to you tonight. I think you all had received these prior. I have some extra copies if you want them, and I really was going to go through it rather quickly, and then if you had questions, entertain that. But I do want to commend you on your district. The last time I was here, we actually took in the musical, the high school musical, but I think it was last year's production. I have five children, so it's very cost-effective for me, and really was a lot of entertainment. And the kids actually talked to the students afterward, thinking they really were who, it was Alice in Wonderland, and they got pictures taken, and they loved the Queen. And it was, so it was a lot of fun. So thanks for doing that, because for me, it saves me a heck of a lot of money, too. And it's a good time. But the reason I'm here is to talk about the county land bank, give you an overview of that and what it means to the school district. It's very important that the school district is a partner, your local leaders, you know, you have a say in what happens in your community. And Scott del Burro has joined in, so it's very important because that is part of your district that Southmoreland serves. I think I'm going to be in your way the whole time, right? I'm on my backs to you, so I'll just keep moving, and you tell me. I really just put some information in because blight affects us. We either live by it, we drive by it, or we drive on our way to work. I live beside a foreclosed home, so I live it every day, and it really does have a statistical value. What the land bank is looking at are vacant, tax-delinquent properties. So this just shows you upwards of 10%. It does affect properties within 500 feet. So it affects our neighborhoods and how we keep them stable. These are photos. These are recognizable photos. We have them. You probably recognize a few even that aren't in your community. They're residential, commercial, industrial, you name it. A lot of times, they're just very complicated. Some do not just pay taxes, but others, they die, and the family members aren't able to maintain the properties. They're not always bad people, but they fall in bad situations. We have them countywide. It's not just one community's problem. What does that mean for us? Properties we're targeting in the land bank are what's going to a free and clear sale stage. So this means they haven't been paying taxes for a very long time, okay? And other individuals aren't interested in them. They're challenging properties, and they have challenging titles to them. But that equates to about $7 million on our budget countywide in uncollected taxes. So it's a big deal, and we talked about that earlier here. I mean, we all need that revenue to do the things we need to do and provide the services that we can. About 10% of those countywide are commercial. What is the land bank? If you've never heard of it, it's a governmental entity to address that vacant, tax-delinquent, slum and blight attributes that are just everywhere through our communities. Some aren't so concentrated. You might think of Flint, Michigan, you know, blocks and blocks of blight. In a lot of our communities, it's sporadic, but it still has that same detrimental effect. What we try to do, or at least these are recommended reuses, side lot, meaning there may be a property in between two nice properties, and the neighbors are calling the community and complaining, and it's become a safety issue. Potentially, they could be the owners of a vacant property. Once we would demolish the structure, they would then begin paying taxes on that lot, and even if there's a garden on there, we're ahead of where we are now. Affordable housing, we have profit, and not-for-profit developers interested in housing in Westmoreland County. It's attractive to them. But they need cleared spaces, assemblage of land, and they really don't want to deal with these properties individually. So the land bank would help position it. Same thing for economic development. We have lots of individuals coming in, but do not want that hassle, again, to acquire them, so the land bank would do that on their behalf. Green space parks, conservation efforts. It could be something for the school district. It doesn't necessarily have to be something new built on it just for private use. It could be for public use as well. And I had mentioned economic development. In Pennsylvania, the governor signed this act at the end of 2012. It took about a year and some, for folks are still trying to understand it, to be honest with you. We only have four land banks in the Commonwealth. Westmoreland County is the second countywide. That's a big deal. A lot of folks just really aren't sure. They know it's a valuable tool, but just didn't have the leadership we did in the county. The Westmoreland County Commissioners signed an ordinance in the end of 2013, December, saying, "We're going to make this a county-wide initiative." You can be 10,000 people or more and have your own land bank. Those communities said, "We know it's an issue. We want the help, but we certainly can't do it on our own. We don't have the resources." So therefore, they established it as a county-wide initiative. Since that time, we have a board of directors. They're separate. It's a separate entity. It's staffed by the redevelopment authority, because that's what we do, slum and blight. We've been doing it for decades and working with communities. And what they decided was that they would move forward. And we went through a process, an open, transparent process of an operating plan, bringing school districts and representatives from communities, conservation districts, private developers to the table, saying, "What would you like Westmoreland County's land bank to do?" And from there, a budget and other logistical things. "What does it mean for you?" I mean, really, this PowerPoint is going to talk more about what the municipality has to do because there's a lot more put on the municipality. They have a financial contribution. The school district does not. That's helping match the money the authority had put in to launch the Westmoreland County Land Bank. The municipality, and in this case, it would be Scott del Burro, would maintain properties when they're in the land bank. They're going to be properties probably out of code or having issues already, so they're being our partners in that by helping us at least minimally maintain them, maybe board them up, make them more attractive until we have them into the bank and redeveloped out of the bank. The goal is to put something in if there's a reason why to get it out. It's not to just put things in there because you can. And really, we don't have the financial resources to just go up and buy everything that we could. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. It has to have a strategic type of effort in why you would, why you would even acquire a property. Now, the municipality and the school district, this is why I'm really talking with you, in the legislation, they allow for, once you sell it, this property out of the land bank, five years, once it's, after it's taxable, 50% of the real estate taxes could be shared. Now, again, that's the reason why we're going after properties that have not been paying taxes, and they're unlikely that they will. So individuals privately are not buying them and doing it with their own. These are ones that haven't been paying taxes. Some of them are 2,000. I saw, you know, 2003, one of the properties. They're going to just be torn down, and nothing's going to happen on that property. So doesn't it make sense, even if the neighbor can buy it and do something and start paying taxes? It's better off than what we currently are. And even better yet is we're looking at rehabbing the homes. I first thought, "We do demolition. We're going to tear things down and make them green, and that's better." But the truth of the matter is, the properties that the folks have abandoned, again, they're not bad people. They may have died, and the estate is stuck, and it's a complicated property. I couldn't go buy it because of all the legal issues. We will work through that. Potentially, then, we're seeking funding to rehabilitate the home. So that way, if you live beside that, it's now a nice rehabilitated home with a family that's moved in, that's paying taxes and working potentially here in the community as well. So you're going to triple the taxes that you could get by doing that. I think that, and that mainly is, again, that's mostly the municipalities' requirements. We already have 10 communities in the land bank. The goal is all 65 municipalities will be part of it. They see the benefit of it. We sit back, we do nothing. We won't ever have taxes, property taxes, or any kind of investment in our communities. We'll have to try to work, get these at a free and clear sale, which means nobody's bid on them. Nobody wants these. Okay? We're not taking attractive properties from somebody else. If they want to do it, we're going to step aside. Somebody wants to develop it, let them, but they're not. Unfortunately, we have more and more that just go to the unsold status at the county, and they sit. So we have applied for funding from the state. They're very much supportive of this. Governor Corbett and his administration has said land banking. That's why they signed it in the first place. It's very important for Pennsylvania if they're going to move forward and produce some types of additional revenues. We already are looking at the inventory here in Scottdale and potential of what to do with it. There are some commercial components. There are residential as well. And obviously, everything we do is on our website, the Westmoreland County Land Bank. All of our policies, our procedures, our ordinance, any properties we take in, day one, is on the website. There's a price point with that. The community is who is driving this. It's a grassroots effort on what are properties and what are targeted areas in your community. As I mentioned, Scott del Burro has already signed on, but it's very critical that the school board is a part of that. Although their commitment level, they contributed $5,000 financially. That matches the $50,000 the redevelopment authority has given. So there's $100,000 in seed money already to initialize the land bank. The project dollars, again, is going to be up to us as the land bank to seek that. So the expectation is that the communities, Scottdale will probably help out on their demolition, since they get that directly with the state. And you have all of my contact information as well, so if there's some things tonight left unanswered, feel free to call, give me a, you know, or send me an email. But really, we need the local input. The local leaders are driving that. Any countywide organization needs to know what you're, what you would like the strategy for redevelopment to be. Without you, it's just going to impede what we're thinking. We're going to have to have that strategy working together, moving forward. So I'm excited. We have the 10 now, and that's all we really, we really cut it off at 10, so we could do a few projects in each community before accepting the next 10. So I'll be on talking with the next 10 municipalities, but we want to make sure we do something in Scottdale that you can see and relate to first. Do you want to have questions, or? Yes?
You talked about seed money.
Yeah.
What, when you get the money from either the grants or wherever you get your money from, and then the demolition, let's say you're demolishing a property. If you demolish that property, then the money that's used to demolish that property, basically, it's not your money from the land bank. It's from a grant. But when you get rid of the property, that money goes to the land bank? It's a form of the taxes, not the...
That's right. That's right. So the project, you know, some of them, you won't net anything in a sale because you have to take a structure down, but the neighbor buys it. What the land bank looks for that tax sharing is to buy more properties, to do more things. So they don't keep it. The administration, the staffing, the land bank is all donated. So I should say, when we talk about the seed money, really, a lot of that's probably going to head towards the project phase, because the county has allowed the redevelopment authority to staff it. So there's no paid staff at the land bank. So that's a savings right off the bat. Secondly, the county IT is doing all the website and all of the promotional things. That's a huge savings, because privately, that would be tens of thousands of dollars. But when we do project by project, it depends. Scottdale, if they use their demolition, it would go back to them to use in other demolition projects. They're a little unique. They go directly to the state for demolition funds. I don't want to get, but we could talk about that further. Yeah.
My next question would be, the five years that you then received half of the tax amount or whatever the fund was, yes, does that go back into acquiring other properties? Is that what it's used for?
Yeah, yeah. So it would go just to keep us, so that we would become sustainable, to keep buying up properties. I mean, the land bank, we're looking at tax delinquency. Folks actually can donate, too, to the land bank. And we have had a lot of phone calls, and we're actually working on three donations right now in other communities, because they're underwater. That's actually maybe a better scenario, because they're not too far gone. But the folks recognize they don't have the money, or it was my dad's house, and I'm in Ohio, and he just passed, and it's a big, large home. Folks would want to move into Scottdale, into that big, large home. We just need to make sure it's up to code and maybe has some modern amenities. So I'm encouraged because folks are looking and reading and hearing about it, and even the banks for the foreclosures, they can donate to us as well. So there's other mechanisms to do it, but that's the reason we're doing tax sale, because these are ones that have been just delinquent for so long. They need to be addressed. Did you, there's a public question? We're not doing it. Okay. Yeah, yeah. It's everywhere, and actually, our large townships that you would think are more affluent have more tax-delinquent properties. Yeah, there's probably, I would say, a handful to a dozen that I'm looking at as a shortlist. Now, that's just tax delinquency that are going to free and clear sale. Let me give you an idea. There's 180,000 tax-delinquent households in the county or people. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, some of these people, it's not an inquiry, like, some of them, they've died, and it's been since 1990. I mean, I really, yeah. But some, like I said, it's circumstances. And they have other bills. If you're not paying your taxes, you're probably not paying your sewage and the IRS. So these properties aren't just taxes. They're ones that typically folks won't go and bid on because they have federal liens, they've got state liens, they've got municipal liens. The list goes on and on. Our job is not going to be an easy one, but we tackle those to clear them up so that someone can buy them. Well, we just, we were just started in this year, January. So, yeah, we actually have three donations on the way, mhm, properties. We have three already. Not in Scottdale. We can't do anything until the school district's in. No, we're acquiring. No, no. We're just in that phase, because the 10 communities have just signed on, gave them their money, and the school districts have to sign on. So really, we're in project mode right now. Yeah. Thank you very much. But please feel free to email me if you have more questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your commentary.
Appreciate you coming.
Do we need to reconvene now?
Yes, we, no.
No?
No. We didn't recess, we just suspended the rules, went out of order.
All right, everybody done? Okay. Minutes?
At the June 30 meeting, you'll be asked to approve the minutes from the May 1, May 8, May 9, and May 29 board meetings.
Okay. Uh, finance?
You'll be asked to approve the May 2014 treasures report, the May 2014 bills payable. And then, in terms of the budget, the picture from the last time we spoke has not changed, but Mr. Marnell does have a sample homestead, farmstead resolution, which is at your desk. So I'll ask Mr. Marnell to talk a little bit about that resolution and what we need to do with that next week, or the week after.
The Commonwealth has notified us that for the Southmoreland School District, the property tax reduction allocation funded by the gambling tax funds amounts to $938,167.53. Now, depending on the amount of homestead and farmstead properties, there are 4,429 homestead properties, 59 farmstead properties, and the allocation, the tax reduction that is for each tax bill, will amount to $209.12. And that's a resolution that has to be passed next week when we pass the budget. So it's pretty close to the same amount as the previous years. I think last year was around $206 if I recall, so that's the highlights of homestead and farmstead exclusion.
Any questions or discussion on finance, folks?
Hi, just to comment, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Marnell, I think it's gone down, I thought it was about $212 or $232 last year that came up at tax.
Actually, it was about $206 last year, and this year it's $209. Let's see, I've got last year's sample. It was $205.96.
Okay.
And I said $209.12 this year.
I stand corrected.
That's, I thought it was more. Insignificant difference, uh, difference won't buy you a gallon of gas today, but...
No, but my point was that gambling is not going to do anything for us. In fact, gambling is slacking off.
It's not the panacea that, as it was pronounced back in, I forget when they passed it, was that 2004, 2005. Of course, I don't know if anybody's done this, but there is a resolution that you could pass to say you don't want it. But I don't know of anybody that has done that, so not very much of that.
Anything else on finance?
Okay, old business?
Yeah, repair of the roadway leading up to the SES SMS campus. Mr. Marnell, Mr. Mizwa have drawn up a set of specifications. The solicitor has reviewed those specifications and he is in the process of getting a prevailing wage determination. And as soon as we have that, we will put the ad in the paper for those bids. And we hope to be able to award them at one of the July meetings, depending on how soon Mr. Patonic is able to get a prevailing wage determination in order for us to have the necessary three weeks of advertising. It may be necessary to ask for a special meeting to award that particular bid, but we're hoping we can have that underway in terms of a July meeting for you.
I have a question on that. We had discussed talking to Scottsdale Borough.
We did. And what we're going to do, we were not able to piggyback our bid process with Scottsdale Borough. Their next council meeting is July the 15th, and they and we both have to pass an intermunicipality cooperation resolution in order to piggyback those bids. However, what the Borough has done is they have provided us with a list of vendors that have been successful bidders in the past, and we intend to make sure that those individuals receive bids, and we're going to ask for two base bids. We're going to ask what the base bid will be if they are not paving for the city, and then what the base bid will be if they are paving for the Borough. And we would expect that to be less because of the cost of mobilization would certainly be a whole lot less and just the economy of scale that would take place there. We did attempt to do that and the timing wasn't good, but we did, Mr. Pallone and I did talk about, you know, some other ventures that might be coming up in the future where we might be able to combine a bid and if nothing else, split advertising costs with the Borough. And again, maybe, you know, get a slightly lower price, you know, because of the quantities that we're able to purchase jointly.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item under old business is policy 005, which you posted, I believe, two months ago. And the only change we're recommending there from the draft that you looked at, in terms of the reorganization meeting, we had drafted that it could be called to order by either the superintendent or the secretary of the board, who shall preside over the election of a temporary president. By statute, the superintendent is not permitted to hold office on the board at all, even to preside in terms of electing a temporary chairperson. So the board secretary would be the individual who would do that. I looked at some other sample policies and sometimes the previous president does that. But if the previous president doesn't happen to be reelected, that would present an issue. So we're just going to strike the word superintendent there and the board secretary will preside over the election of a temporary president when we reorganize. The next item is the pavilion at Roughsdale Elementary School. I had asked Mr. Mizwa to get quotes on that, both for demolition and repair, and he just got a quote from one company. And the idea there was just to give you a ballpark figure, certainly, if a decision is made to go one way or another with the pavilion, we would, you know, solicit bids locally and obviously go for the lowest price, but we just wanted to kind of give you a ballpark. We did touch base with the local Lions Club. They indicated that they had returned ownership and responsibility for the pavilion back to the district. So if you look at those figures, the figure for, and again, ballpark here, to repair the pavilion came to $13,758. To demolish the pavilion was $2,800. And then we also have an individual who is interested in purchasing the pavilion, who lives next door. So those are three options we have. And again, those prices are just ballpark prices, depending on what the board's wish is in terms of what to do with that. We would certainly competitively bid those, or if we were to sell it, we would obviously advertise that as well. So we'd entertain discussion on that matter, if there is any.
We have to bid, we use the, we decide sale, we don't bid.
Right.
Well, you have the same three amendments. You have the public auction, you have a private sale, which requires court approval, or you could have sealed bids. If I may, I just would think that the board, and I know I'm concerned, as to the location of the pavilion property in relation to the perimeter of the entire property, as to whether by carving something out, you're going to be creating some undesirable feature about the remaining property of the school district. Do we chop it up too much?
It is near, near one of the borders, I believe it's...
It would be helpful to have a sketch of that or something.
Right.
Right. Any other questions?
Comment, it's not possible for our own people to do any of that repair work?
I would ask Mr. Mizwa if he were here.
Okay.
Probably, just in looking at it, Mrs. Rhodes, the entire shingling is going to have to come off. I personally would not be wanting to stand on the sheeting that's under that shingling because there are holes, you can actually see sky in some places. So I think someone is going to have to be on some kind of a high lifter, you know, be supported in some way. I don't think we'd want to send our people up there without the right equipment.
So you think it's beyond the scope of what our people could do?
I do, just because I think there's some rotting of the plywood there, and I wouldn't want to put a person up there.
And obviously, then if our people couldn't do it, VOTEC students also could not.
It's just a matter of, I don't think the roof will bear, safely bear weight.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Good question.
Yeah. The trusses, everything all right or is it...
From what I could see, they are. I mean, you know, it seems to be the sheeting more than anything.
Was it outside the room?
Don't know, sir. I don't know. We can get that for you if you'd like.
Just one other question, maybe, maybe Butch knows this. Who uses this pavilion or what's it used for? Who uses it, that kind of thing? Maybe Butch can answer that. Do you know, Butch? Who uses the pavilion?
Does anybody use it?
Yeah. Who uses it?
Probably the only ones that use is, he's trying to use it, or Southmore used it.
Directly, okay.
And probably people have used it in the past and lives in that vicinity. I don't know how much traffic's through that building right now, but I've been, but it has been used, in fact, the highest of all, and that stuff pretty, pretty familiar with your tournaments and stuff like that.
That's what I thought.
Rec baseball games are played.
Yes.
You have a lot of recreation baseball camps that are...
Right.
And I brought my team down there over the years.
David, just one more thing on that. You indicated that maybe there's some kind of liability we might have by having that property sold. If we bid it out, there might be a liability involved there?
Well, liability's not the correct word, but, and it may or may not be an issue. I just can't remember where that pavilion is in relation to the perimeter boundaries. And if it's...
It's on the boundary, David.
Yeah, it's directly adjacent to the park.
If, I don't know if it would create some disadvantage in trying to either maintain or the remainder of the property or someday to sell it or subdivide it or something. But if it's on the boundary, you know, maybe it's not such a big deal. I just don't know that...
Right, I understand. Well, I'd like to have your opinion and know that before we decide at the next meeting whether we want to sell it or repair it because we need to know that. So we need to have your opinion on whether it would create any kind of an issue. Because if we don't know that, then we certainly couldn't vote to sell a property if we weren't sure what would happen.
We can provide you with a rudimentary sketch of the property and where it sits.
But it will be up to David to give us his opinion as to whether that will create an issue of any kind, not us.
One of the things we could have to decide is how much ground is going to go with, that's really the big key here.
Okay. The property would be landlocked at this point if we did, if the school did not provide access to it. There's no, there's no regress to get into it unless we allow them to go up like our driveways, unless the direct...
Yeah, unless the gentleman who's...
Unless the gentleman whose land is directly beside it, is that who it is?
Because that, that perimeter, if I remember right, should have formed more in one side of the corner.
Right.
And behind the houses borders the other side.
Right.
Behind, I forget who lived nearby, Ken Wha Pay, what happened.
Yeah, Josh and those guys.
And the other two sides borders the school property.
That's correct.
There's no public access to that facility, except through school parking.
Right.
That's correct.
So that would be another issue. Any other questions?
Unless one of the landowners...
Right. If they buy it off their...
Right.
They can make their own assets, make their own profits.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions?
Okay, the next item, I believe Mr. Patonic handed you some lease documents. David, you want to discuss those a little bit? One is for the community action, and I don't think you handed one out for the pre-K counts, is that correct?
Uh, no. I handed out the, well, actually, I'll have to look at this, but I thought the approval was already made for the pre-K counts.
It was, and then you told me that we had to approve a formal lease as well, so that's why we're having this conversation now.
Okay. I better look at the resolution again, but I mean, we did do the lease, you and I worked on that.
Right.
These two are for Roughsdale and they provide for three-year leases with increases which Dr. Monar negotiated. And all of the requirements that Councilman Department of Public Education wants to see in lease are mentioned in here, as I did with my previous years. The lease is broken down into a lump sum for the entire three-year period and then for each year and each monthly payment. There are provisions to have an early termination in the event of certain kinds of activities, basically, without having default. And that would be if the Head Start program was not funded for the following lease year or if there were some major health or environmental issue that was going to require expense, then there's the possibility of either party terminating the lease so that neither side's trying to hold the other party into a deal that they really don't want, and that protects both sides that way. So that's really all I have to say about those two.
So we'll ask you to vote on those two leases at the next meeting. That brings us to new business.
Okay, new business.
All right, the first item under new business is the family medical leave policy. We've been looking at this policy for quite a little bit of time now, and Dr. Scott and the other administrators and I have discussed it at length. And for the most part, our policy, it is within the scope of the law. The law provides two choices for individuals who are taking family medical leave. They may be required to use their paid leave at the same time they're having family medical leave, or they can just take unpaid leave and reserve their paid leave that is otherwise provided to them through another benefit program, such as their sick days. And one of the things that we found out as we've been working through this process, as soon as someone takes a family medical leave, the district is automatically paying double because we're paying that individual for their sick days that they've accumulated, and we're also paying a sub for that individual. Whereas, in some cases, employees may choose to bank those sick days and keep them, and then at the end of their employment, they are certainly entitled to some payment under the contract for a certain number of sick days, but certainly not all of them. So that could be a savings to the district in that regard, or it may not. But the other issue we have is some of these individuals who take family medical leave acts, based on the timing of their leave, they come back to work at the end of September, end of October, and find themselves with absolutely no paid time off. So if they get sick, if they have an emergency, anything like that, and they're just out of luck, then they have to request an unpaid day through me, and I have to consider whether or not to grant it or not to grant it. So we're trying to revise this, both to benefit the district and to provide the employee with some kind of flexibility there. So that was the first change that we wanted to present. On page three of seven, we just changed the word term to school year, just to make that a little bit more clear as to what the policy meant. And then on page four of seven, if an eligible employee is not employed principally in an instructional capacity and requests leave that is foreseeable based on planned treatment that is medically necessary, the school district may, at the employee's written request, permit that employee to transfer temporarily to an available alternative position for which such employee is qualified, offered by the school district, if the alternative position, even if the alternative position does not provide for equivalent pay and benefits. Now, the difference is, in the original policy, someone could only be transferred into another position if the pay and benefits were the same. We have situations with our non-teaching staff, for example, someone who might be a cook in a cafeteria who has to undergo a medical treatment two, three days a week. Maybe they're a head cook, so they can't fulfill those responsibilities, but they're still able to work so they could volunteer to temporarily take a lower-paying position. We couldn't force... We couldn't force them to do that under the law, but, but at their request, we wanted to provide both ourselves and the employee the flexibility. And then on page five of seven, items five and six were just redundant, so we struck item six, and then we added the word medically necessary for the care or treatment of the employee or a family member, just to streamline the verbiage there. So, those were the changes that we were hoping to be able to put into this policy. And I gave you policy 435, which is professional employees. There's also a section for classified employees, there's a section for administrative employees. The only thing that's different is the number at the top of the page. And actually, when you use the School Board Association's template, they just call it employees now. They don't, they don't designate between the three, but our manual is still set up in the, in the different sections. So, we would be asking you to amend all three, all three of those, because the verbiage would be identical. Questions or discussion?
Some questions on the FMLA. I contacted four different employers, one of them in Scottsdale. They all require the individual to take all their sick and annual leave before they have FMLA. So, again, they were all private employers, as opposed to being a government employee or otherwise.
Okay, is that before they take FMLA?
They have to use their annual and, their vacation pay and their sick pay before they are granted the 12 weeks of FMLA.
Okay, but the way we were doing it is, the vaca, the sick time was part of the 12 weeks.
Right.
So, we've had employees who have had plenty of vacation time, they request an FMLA leave, and they burn all their vacation days and come back to work, and that counts as their time.
And that's what these companies require. They require you burn all your leave instead of, and just having the 12 weeks and then holding your vacation and sick till you come back, you have to burn your leave first. You can't, and the purpose there is, again, the employer lost the use of your time.
Right.
And now, what you're saying is, when I come back, you can lose my time again by virtue of the fact that I can now take my sick and annual leave. So, they, and as I said, I've contacted four private industry and one of them in town, and that's what they do. The second point I want to make is, if this is a benefit, and it would appear that you and Dr. Scott have discussed this before as being a benefit, and I certainly see it as being a fringe benefit, why don't we use it in negotiation, as opposed to just granting it? When we go for our teacher's contract, why would you not use this as a bargaining point, as opposed to just giving this, if you see it as a fringe benefit?
The reason we didn't consider that is because FMLA is not part of the contract, but rather is, is a policy. So, there's no, no provision in the contract at all for FMLA.
But you could make that part of the contract by offering that as a change in your FMLA policy, could you not?
I believe we could.
And then we would then have that as something that we could bargain with. Again, I look at it from the standpoint, I know what you're saying about an individual having no annual or sick leave when they come back, and that we're paying it all out upfront, and then we're also paying the substitute. But when they use that sick or annual leave on the tail end, you're paying the substitute anyway.
Right, if they use it.
If they use it.
Yeah.
But again, no one, no one's going to either give up their sick leave or not hold it so that they can cash it in when they're done. Most people don't give up their sick leave, they certainly don't give up their regular leave time, their vacation time. So, I mean, again, they're going to use it, one way or the other. They're either going to use it and get paid for it in the end, or they're going to use it when they come back after taking 12 weeks of unpaid leave. So, you're still going to pay the substitute or pay it out anyway.
Some will and some won't, because we do have individuals who, at the end of their career, collect whatever they are providing under the contract, and then still lose days that they have not used.
I'll just give an example. As a federal employee, I had the same situation, and many of the federal employees that I manage had the same situation. It got really close. You very seldom gave up very many of your sick days. You worked it out, so you either used all your sick days, or you got paid for all your sick days. So, I'm not saying that people won't lose them occasionally, but most people are not going to do that.
Other discussion?
I have a question, just on clarification. When you were talking about them using their sick days and things like that before, did these companies, that they used, were the people using their sick days, then they still got 12 weeks?
No, it was part of their 12 weeks.
It was part of the 12 weeks?
They had to use that as part of their 12 weeks before they, in other words, you couldn't save, you couldn't take 12 weeks of unpaid FMLA, saving your sick leave and your vacation days, and then come back to work the following year, or whenever you came back, and use those days. You had to use them upfront, you had to use up what available leave you had before. And again, and I will tell you, one of the companies is local, it's Pennline, and that's their policy. And as I said, I contacted three other companies, and they all had the same policy. Now, again, federal and state employees generally don't do that. They will let you take your FMLA without using up your sick and annual leave. I don't know this is the reason, but it seems makes sense to me, the reason they do that is because they can't hire anybody temporary, so they're going to lose it anyway, no matter what. I mean, there's no point in them saying, well, we don't want you to use it, because then we're going to gain on the, no, they're going to lose it no matter what, because they don't hire temporary. But a business entity can hire temporarily, and so that's a little different. And we have the same option when we're doing a substitute, we're getting the same option. So, I consider us more in the realm of the private, as opposed to being the public.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay. GAP day treatment.
Okay. The next item is our annual contract with the GAP day treatment. Every year, we renew our contract with them. This year, their tuition is $115 a day, and that does include transportation. And again, we're only charged that in the event we use it. That's the same per diem that they've had last year, and that includes transportation, urinalysis, and 24/7 continuity of service. Those, those folks are always on call, so we'd ask that you renew that contract. New Directions is a partial hospitalization program located in Union Town. We use them only when we have to, and the reason I say that is because we generally don't have buses that are going that direction. But it, excuse me, occasionally, we have a student whose mental health needs dictate placement at New Directions, so we like to have that contract in place as well. Regular ed students are $72 a day, and special education students there are $80 per day. And again, these are for students who we just can't educate, you know, here, and many of the kids who, all of the kids, as a matter of fact, who are going to partial hospitalization programs are there because a psychiatrist has written a prescription that those are the kinds of mental health issues that they have, and that's where they're to be educated. Anytime we can, we keep them here.
Any comments?
Adelphi is the same thing. They run two programs. One is a private academic program that's located at Hartford Heights, the former Hartford Heights Elementary School in Norland. That program is somewhat more intense. They also run an alternative ed program that meets in Latrobe. The cost is $160.17 a day for the private, private academic program that meets at Hartford Heights, $74.93 for regular ed, $82.50 for special ed, and that's for the alternative ed programs. And occasionally, just, just so you know, we have maybe one or two students at each of these places maximum in a given year. We don't, you know, send students unadvisedly there.
Comments? All right, then we move on to Twister.
We've been a member of the Tri-State School Study Council ever since I can remember, and that membership is up for renewal. It's $700 annually. It's supported by fees from member districts such as us, as well as a subsidy from the University of Pittsburgh. We do use Tri-State a good bit. We send our people to trainings. They have a really good school law training that we do. They also do some recruitment work for districts upon request, and, and we get newsletters from them on a regular basis about different curricular issues and legal issues, things of that nature. So, would ask that you would consider that renewal for next year.
Questions? We'll move on to Wingspan.
All right, this is an unusual situation. This bill arrived just the other day, because apparently they had sent it to 609 Parker Avenue, and it never got to us, it was sent back. But we do have one individual who is being educated at the Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau, and that is located in Shaker Heights, Ohio. And the reason that individual is there is because, try as we might, we were not able to provide him with a free and appropriate public education locally. And we do have a list of facilities where this individual attended and was not successful for various reasons that I will not discuss publicly. So, he is currently at Belfair. The mission of Belfair is to have him there for maybe anywhere from one to three years, hopefully, and then have things in a sufficient state of affairs that he is able to be educated on a more local situation and a more economical way. This is a very expensive program. The tuition for one student there is $82,875 for 195 days. That translates to $425 a day. Again, this student has been there this year, and I apologize, we did not have this resolution prior to the fact, but again, it just arrived this week, so this will be the second year he's been there. The board did approve his attendance there two years ago.
Questions? Jim?
Student is housed there?
Yes.
In Ohio?
Yes, and this is the educational piece, not the, this is tuition only. We're not responsible for room and board, but yes, he is housed there.
His parents live in this building?
Yes.
Any other questions? We already talked about Westmore and Kelly Landbanks. The postage machines?
Mr. Marnell knows that our postage lease, I believe we're with Pitney Bowes, is up, and so he did a cost study and has a proposal and a recommendation for you. So, Jim, I'll let you elaborate a little bit on that.
Yes, we have been leasing our postage equipment from Pitney Bowes. There's a, there's a unit in each school and one in the business office. I asked Pitney Bowes to present a proposal using government contract pricing, which they did. I also asked two other vendors to give me a proposal also. One is called Amasty, and the other one is called Neopost. You have a copy of this summary in your, in your packet, and the Amasty proposal, when you compare them down to monthly savings, monthly savings of $60.42 over our existing monthly lease payment. Pitney Bowes came in second with a monthly savings of $50.91, and Neopost was third. So, under either proposal, you're saving money. To be fair, Amasty is saving the most. It's an upgrade in equipment. They are a Pitney Bowes distributor. Neopost is not, and they had their own line of equipment. Both well-recommended. I think Amasty is down the road there in the Belburnin School District and several others in the county. So, my recommendation would be to utilize the Amasty for our new equipment.
Thank you, Jim. We'll ask you to consider that on the 30th, as well as a voting item. And the next item is GASP45, Government Accounting Standards Boards, and 45, I think, is the number of their latest regulation. Is that correct, Mr. Marnell?
Oh, no, this, this regulation has been out there for several years. I'm not sure what number they're up to. I think they're in the 70s now, so they're easy to lose track of. I call 45 another one of those unfunded mandates. Back in the late 90s, I think '99, our legislature said, hey, you know what, all governmental entities in the state of Pennsylvania will comply completely with GASP, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So, these folks up in Greenwich, Connecticut, I think that's where it's at, they come up with these pronouncements. And this one is for us to book the actuarial liability of what's called post-employment benefits. For example, health insurance or dental and vision. The Wall Street world wants to know what the, the potential liability for those post-employment benefits are, just like there's, you know, pension disclosure regulations, so on and so forth. So, you know, one of the, one of the nuggets in, in the GASP45 regulation is that you have to have it done by an independent actuary. It's not a number that, that we could fabricate. So, the Business Manager Group, when, when this law first hit us about a decade ago, I think, or less, we researched companies, and we got proposals. We all went with the same firm, the Willis Group. Again, it's time for, you know, an update of these studies. Again, we went out and researched, and our recommendation as a group is, is this, the Hawley Consulting Group. They gave us the best price, a very knowledgeable firm. They've already produced a number of these in the county, so would like to get us on their, their schedule to perform this evaluation report.
We do, what happens?
Well, your, your auditor would say, you know, you're not in compliance with, you know, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Opinion Number 45, so he would say, I qualify my opinion because you didn't comply with this.
So, nothing happens?
Well, no monetary penalty. What could happen is, the rating agencies, you know, that rate your bond issues. Every year, we have to go through another unfunded mandate that, that came about, about 15 years ago, this continuing disclosure rule that the SEC passed, and, and to do a municipal bond issue every year, we have to put together this packet of information. Part of that information is your, your audited financial report, your annual budget, so on and so forth, and statistical information. And this goes to this organization that, that keeps this giant database of all this information. So, if an investor's out there and wants to buy Southmoreland bonds, they may go to this municipal database and, and look up information on Southmoreland, your, you know, your audit reports, your, your other information that's on there. And if, and if you get a qualified opinion for an issue like this, it may or may not affect your bond rating. It may or may not affect an individual from buying your bonds, you know. I liken it to going to school, you know? We're all striving to, you know, you go to school, you want to get an A, you want to get a good grade, so. I don't like it, but that's the fact, we got to do it.
But I don't like spending money if we don't have to.
I, I agree with you. I agree.
Would you happen to know offhand if, who complies and who doesn't?
I, I really, I really don't. We all, we all comply as a group in the county, and I can't imagine.
Because I'd like to see us just say, to these, as you say, unfunded mandates, you know what, we don't need it. You know, if every school district suffers no penalty, and if every school district refused to pay that money, then when the bond issuers look, they'll see that there are none.
And it's just not school districts, it's your boroughs, your township, your county, governments, maybe even it, agencies like the Social Security Administration or whatever. I mean, you know, any, any governmental entity. Sounds like a money-making scheme to me.
How often is this done, Jim? I mean, is this done every, how many years do we have to do this?
Every three years. Now, we're slightly out of compliance there. The last one was done in 2010, so, you know, shame on us. And we didn't suffer, did we? Well, no. No, we got our bonds refinanced, didn't we? Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
I'm not in the habit of recommending that we ignore legislation, but again.
And I wouldn't either, that decision.
You know, I think if we ignored a lot of the legislation, we'd be a lot better off financially and education-wise. But of course, that's only my opinion.
Jim, can I ask a question? Is this sort of on a private equation with our credit, our credit ratings? I mean, our individual people, that it's one of those things that everybody puts things into, and it's something that somebody out there can look at to see, basically?
No.
No?
No, there's, there's no information disclosed on individuals.
No, 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 no. I mean, I mean, a general equation, analogy. Is this an analogy, something the school district, somebody that would, they would look at, just like somebody would look, for instance, at my credit rating if I went out and I applied for A.
It's more public than that.
What?
It's more public.
It's more public than that.
It's more public than that, so...
I understand.
Yeah. Is that kind of a analogy there?
I think so.
So if I say I want to ignore my credit rating? I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Again, it's, you know, you hire a local auditor, CPA, to come in and audit you because, again, that's a requirement in the school code. It's also a requirement when you take federal funds that you get an annual audit, and that part of the audit is called the Single Audit Act. It was something that was passed back in the early eighties. Again, another one of those nice mandates you have to comply with that increased auditing costs. But be that as it may, your auditor will say, you know what? We talked about it. We talked about it last summer, and we researched it and examined the GASB regulation. We're like, you know what? We do need to get a fresh report. So that said, Mr. Stiber says, you know, you need to do it. And it's part of his job as your auditor, say, you know what? You know, you want what's called an unqualified opinion, which is, you know, a good audit report. That, you know, we complied with all these financial regulations. We complied with federal regulations on the expending of federal dollars that we're in compliance with, you know, how we spend our state funds, so...
Do you just want to get federal money for complying with that?
Oh, no, 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 no. You have to comply with all kinds of stipulations and regulations on how you handle it, how you spend it. So, you know, this is just one piece of the compliance work that your auditor does. You know, are you in compliance with GASB-45? Are you compliant with GASB-16 and 34? So as each one of these financial regulations come out, it's just another adjustment that we have to make and comply with.
Jim, this firm that we're looking at to do this, you said they were... How many school districts are using this firm? Did you know? Or how many have you got together? You said you got together with some others?
The whole county has made the recommendation to utilize this company.
So all the schools in Westmoreland County are using...
Right. Yeah. If I talked to this individual this past winter, and he gave me a price on an individual basis. And then, as we talked as a group, we decided, let's bring this individual in, and let's talk to him and see if we can get a group price. You know, we do joint purchasing in a lot of endeavors. You're going to talk about diesel and gasoline later. So he brought this individual in, and he said, you know what? You folks, you know, get together, I'll give you a discounted price. And we did. It was about a thousand dollars less than if we had utilized him one-on-one, so...
Any other questions? All right, Burkheimer.
Okay, yeah. This is a perennial request we get from Burkheimer. Burkheimer is our delinquent earned income tax collector, and they are not permitted to purchase the 2011 state tax list, but we are. So we generally purchase it for them. They reimburse us for that cost, and we provide it to them. So we would ask you to approve that so that Burkheimer can get about their work in terms of delinquent tax collection.
Questions? CWCTC?
Yes, Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center would like to establish a capital reserve fund. They originally, several years ago, had a capital reserve fund, and then for some reason, that fund was changed and limited to only one or two things that they were able to do. I think specifically it was fire and safety, Jason, am I correct?
Yeah, telephone system.
Right. So it was very restrictive. And what CWCTC is asking is for the Latitude to have a capital reserve fund so that they're able to do more things as they come up without coming back to school boards. That might include the replacement of a broken down and worn out, you know, piece of expensive equipment. It might be an emergency, hopefully not a roof repair, because they're putting a new roof on it. But they're talking about a fire alarm system that's not part of their ESCO project. So they would like authorization to be able to have a capital reserve fund. So we would ask you to consider that at the meeting on the thirtieth.
Any questions? Comments?
A couple more. Is there a cap on this? The other one had a $60,000 cap.
I believe there will be a cap on it, Jason, but I'm not sure what that cap is.
We talked about some different numbers there, but the old resolution had a cap in the resolution, but this one, it doesn't have it.
It does not seem to have a cap. You know what? Let me research that, and I'll have that information for you next, on Monday, the thirtieth.
Gasoline and diesel fuel.
Yeah, every year, we are part of the Joint Purchasing Consortium for gasoline and diesel fuel. And this year, the Joint Purchasing Consortium through the IU for gasoline is recommending that the bid be awarded to petroleum traders at about $2.99 per gallon. And diesel fuel for Port's Petroleum, and that would be at about $3.02 per gallon. So we'd recommend that you adopt that resolution next week as well.
Questions? Tax exoneration.
Yeah, we opened those last Thursday. Good thing we didn't wait another week.
Just writing myself a note here about the CWCTC, so I remember to research that. Okay, tax exoneration. The former Fraternal Order of Eagles property appears to be one of those blighted properties, not necessarily... It was specifically on April Coffus's land bank list, but it's certainly a property that seems to fit that description here in Scottdale. The building has been condemned, and Scottdale Bank and Trust is about to foreclose on the property. And it would appear that they have a potential buyer who would demolish the property and turn it into a parking lot. And the lien holder, which is Scottdale Bank and Trust, is asking both the borough of the county and the school district to exonerate taxes for 2012, 2013, and 2014. That would amount to an exoneration for the school district of about $3,739.75 if I added all those figures correctly. And those were taken off of the lien certificates that I have, and that includes interest and penalties as well. And I know Mr. Petonik has been working closely with Mr. Yonity, who's the borough solicitor. And I believe he handed out some information to you, correspondence that Mr. Yonity had sent to Attorney Tui with respect to some contingencies that the borough is interested in having as a part of their exoneration motion. And that being the fact that the exoneration would only occur if and when the property was successfully sold, successfully demolished and developed, correct, David? And I'll let you elaborate a little bit on that. Just an executive summary, if you would, please.
Yeah. The number which you quoted does not include what the taxes would be for 2014. So if mileage were constant, then you would have to add another $1,519.97 for one lot and $148 for another lot, which would bring your grand total to $5,408 and maybe some additional interest, depending on how long it takes to get to a closing. The borough has thoughtfully made a condition here that the exoneration would not go into effect unless they're going to actually accomplish, well, they used commencing demolition of the existing structure. I am still looking at this, but I'm going to probably recommend that at some point an owner, whether it's the intermediary Fraternal Order, grandary of Eagles, or the ultimate purchaser, request the exoneration and be identified. And although I don't suspect this to be a problem, just as a kind of a matter of routine, because it's what the land bank is going to do, so I'm taking a page out of their playbook that the person or entity not currently be delinquent with any local taxes, including our own, on some other property. I think that would be rather embarrassing to go and exonerate taxes on a deal and then find out that, you know, the ultimate owner is maybe delinquent on something else. The deal is, you know, there's approximately $49,000 owed the bank. There's another lien of about $1,000 owed a judgment creditor, and roughly $1,800, I think, as a municipal claim by Scottdale Borough. So those would be getting paid. And then there's an estimate cost of demolition of about $50,000. So the ultimate acquirer is going to borrow around $100,000 in order to accomplish all this. However, if something else comes up, and one of those would be asbestos, that could kill the whole deal cost-wise. So I would look forward to bringing you a resolution for the June 30th meeting, have a little bit more specificity as to some of these conditions in it, and then you'd be in a position to vote on it. Even though you vote on it and approve it, and everybody approves it, there's still a possibility that the ultimate purchaser out there, whoever that is, may, for whatever reason, change their mind. So we might also want to put some kind of time limit on this to get a final sales agreement signed, just to not have it lingering out there, you know, in an unknown status. I want to talk to Mr. Yonity about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Questions?
Dave, if I heard you correctly, the possible purchaser will put out $100,000, they'll get a loan to purchase the property and do the demolition. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
But they're asking us to give up our taxes that they owe us, which are about $4,500?
Plus the borough and the county.
Okay. In your experience, is it an all-or-nothing thing? I mean, it seems like if I'm willing to get $100,000 for the property, and let's say it's they owe $10,000 in taxes, I mean, do we have to give them all of it? Can we say, you know what? We'll exonerate half of the taxes or a quarter? It seems like they're willing to put some money out in front here, and we're saying, yeah, go ahead, we'll forgive the taxes, but you've got the money to buy the property and do the demolition. Is this an all-or-nothing proposition? Can we counteroffer them and say, yeah, we'll exonerate half of the taxes? Or we'll exonerate 2011 and 2012, but you're paying 2013 and 2014? Is that, in your experience, is that something that we could do?
Number one, this just has never happened before. This is an unusual situation. I don't know what would happen. I honestly don't. And I'm not... I know the borough is concerned from a public safety aspect that they want this to happen. And if you want to have it happen quickly, here's a ready-made buyer to do it. Now, having said that, I'm not telling you that you have to do this.
No, I know, I know.
I mean, you have discretion.
I'm just saying, it sounds like the buyer, the potential buyer, is willing to tank the deal if we don't forgive the taxes. But they're putting a whole lot of money out way above what the tax liability is. It would seem like we should be able to go back in and say, you know what? We would like at least a couple of years' taxes out of it. And, you know, you're borrowing $100,000, so you borrow $110,000 and pay some of the taxes. If he's willing to tank the deal for that, well, you know... I'm just saying, it just, that seems like, if I'm looking at it from my standpoint, I'd say, how about we meet you halfway? We'll give up half the tax money or a quarter of the tax money.
Doesn't look like the bank's taking the loss.
No, they're not. As I said, nobody's... We're the ones taking the loss. Everybody else is getting their piece of the pie. And again, I understand, I want to see it go through too, because it's better it's demolished and it's a tax, a taxable property even as a parking lot. But again, we're the only one taking the hit. Anyone with taxes owed are taking the hit. Bargain.
Excuse me. Is this question where a land bank is looking at this property?
I don't think they will.
Not that we know of. Not that we know of, but we don't know.
I think we better check into that before...
If they've got a buyer for $100,000 or so, I don't think the land bank is looking at that one.
No. I'd agree with them. I mean, they're going to go out here and get $100,000 owed, and why should we like to hold them?
It seems like the district always has to...
And they're going to come out and be strong.
It seems like the district always has to take it on the chin, you know? And looking at our current budget, you know, if we have to raise taxes, then, you know, it's forgotten that we've taken this on the chin how many times? And, you know, then we come out as the bad guys if we have to raise the taxes. So I agree with Bob and Butch, you know? Hopefully, we can work something out to get some of that money that's owed to us.
One thing that doesn't make any sense to me, that somebody would put out $100,000 to make a parking lot if they weren't making some kind of money down the road, because I don't think we're going to have a paid parking lot.
That's right.
So it must be being used for some purpose. So somebody will make money. It shouldn't be us.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, we don't know, and maybe you don't care. You wouldn't necessarily have to. But we don't know the limits of how the loan will work as to whether this property is being used as collateral or some other property, and whether or not there's enough equity in it to cover more than the $100,000. I don't know that, and I don't know that that will be revealed. So what I'm going to do is, when I prepare the resolution, I'm going to say, exonerate blank percent of the taxes and leave it up to you folks to decide whether it's going to be 100%, 50%, 60%, whatever.
Any other comments? Okay. Good. We have one more item.
And the last item I have for public consumption comes from our Food Service Director. There are some new...
Well, no. We're going to move on. Are we going to move on? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, there are some new school breakfast requirements that are taking effect next year. Previously, and you have this in front of you at your desks, under fruit, half cup a day, and vegetable substitution was allowed. The new requirement, K to 12, one cup of fruits or vegetables per day. The other change is whole grains, which were encouraged previously. In beginning July 1, all grains must be whole grain rich. The problem that that presents is those things cost more money than the previous requirements. So Mrs. Huggins is recommending that breakfast prices be increased from $1 to $1.25. And she will, she's on vacation this week, but she is hoping to be available on the 30th to answer any questions that you might have regarding this. But we would ask that you consider this at the meeting on the 30th as well.
Any questions?
Since she's not here, she can't answer. But again, we know Congress never does what they say they're going to do, but I know they're looking at that now about revising the requirements. And I'm assuming that if they did happen to vote and it was approved to revise the requirements, not to make them a stringent as they are presented here, that we would then relook at that at some point. And we can do that during the school year? We could adjust that figure during the school year?
Sure.
One of the things that I've read recently is that some of these huge school districts that are poor are telling the government, keep your money. We'll serve our children the food that they want to eat, that we feel is healthy, you know? Instead of, like I always say, Johnny and the green beans. Johnny hates green beans. So give him something that he might like for our money.
Yeah, they're very expensive school districts, and the very wealthy school districts and the very poor school districts are starting to pull out of Taipei. The very wealthy school districts just put pizza kiosks in. That's what they do. And the very poor school districts are going the other direction.
Any other questions?
That is all I have for public consumption this evening. We do have a number of items to discuss in executive session that deal with mostly As a matter of fact, I believe they're all personnel unless Mr. Petonik has something litigious that he needs to discuss.
Not tonight. Could I have a motion, please, to adjourn to executive session? By Mrs. Rhodes? By the second? Second by Mr. Flora. We adjourned to executive session.
We adjourn to executive session.